Okay, it's four o'clock and I'd like to come to this special meeting in Southwest Lake County, Martin City District. Order, please call the room.
Mr. Stepp?
Here.
Mrs. Carter?
Here.
Mr. Crissman?
Here. Please rise and welcome the board members.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have a very short agenda today. I will ask for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the agenda?
I would like to propose that we add an area for public comments.
You agree with that?
I'm not opposed to that. My understanding is that we've advertised it as a special meeting if we may want to consult with our...
My understanding is as long as the comments are pertaining to the subject at hand.
Okay.
Okay.
If that's your understanding, I have no objection to that.
Okay, we will...where would you like to end that? At the end, the beginning, the middle?
No, at the end. After the interview, prior to our comments, I would say.
A motion to amend the approval of the agenda. We have a motion.
I'll second.
And a second. Any more discussion? Please call the room.
Mr. Stepp?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Crissman?
Yes. We have trustee...public comments?
That was a motion to amend. We still have to vote on the motion to adopt?
Correct.
Sorry.
Motion to adopt the amended agenda.
I didn't make that motion.
Any more discussion? Please call the room.
Mr. Stepp?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Crissman?
Yes. Okay, we now have public comments after board action. Correct? And before trustee comments. Is that right?
No, public comments prior, after the interview, prior to our action.
Prior to our...okay, okay. Please call the room.
I believe it was our...
We did that.
Well, for clarification, your motion was to have public comments after the interview, prior to board action, and trustee comments.
Correct.
Oh, I'm sorry. Disregard. Okay, so that is our agenda. Let's begin our interview process. Mr. Platt, would you have any comments to make ahead of our questioning?
Sure. Just thank you for the opportunity. I know the board district certainly has a lot going on. Before I came there, I did a quick count of no less than 15 entities or groups, if you will, developers that I know the board has interactions with and projects going on and stuff. So certainly some creative things can be done to find funding that could be done here recently because you're where the district has taken a significant turn in the last couple of years on how to approach its development and keeping those costs off the backs of the existing customers through creative funding solutions and things like that. And I absolutely believe that's the way to go. With everything that you've got going on, I'd be happy to assist the district with that as a consultant in line with what you posted as that you were looking for such. So happy to answer any questions.
I called you references.
Okay.
One was Jerry Newton.
That's great.
Jerry Newton, Licking County Planning. And he said that when you came to him, you were a little green, very aggressive, and quite confident when he left.
Good.
I had talked to Mr. Lamb, and he was the director of...
He was the economic development director for Delaware County?
Delaware County.
Yep.
And he said he thinks you were the best hire he ever made.
Oh, good.
To me. I don't know if he told you that.
No, not talking.
But he was very, very aware of your career and like that.
Well, good.
Your resume lists all the issues, all the places you've worked, all the people you've worked with.
It does.
I don't know that there's a resume that matches up with your credentials. And I served with you on this board for three years. And as much as we agreed on things, we did have some issues with administering from a board seat. And that is probably the biggest fear I had having seen it happen. But again, I'm working with you for three years. I really didn't realize what all you'd accomplished in your part of your three years of us. So can we ask anyone else to have any comments or questions?
I have questions for Mr. Platt.
Very good.
And I don't know how you guys typically handle interviews. Do you allow the trustee to just ask all of their questions, or do you guys do a round robin?
It's whoever has the question you should ask. That's I think that's the...
I have a few, so we can do back and forth, I guess, if you want.
Absolutely.
Very good.
I guess I would start...my first question for Mr. Platt is how does Jersey Township feel about you entering into a consultant type of business, not just in reference to the sewer model district, but just in general?
Sure.
In addition to your duties there? Like, they don't find out a conflict in any way?
No, and they are aware. Obviously, I'm a...well, I guess I'm obviously...I'm a salary position there. I have extremely flexible schedule. I end up doing a lot of meetings in the evenings. I do a lot of work on the weekends. So, you know, there is room in my schedule to move things around fluidly as needed. But they are aware of it. They don't see a conflict with it either. They...I think the main thing we have to remember is the agreements between the district and Jersey are already in place. This, you know, took place over a decade ago, and there's been a couple of follow-ups. So there's really nothing further that could even...that would really realistically pose an issue for me conflict-wise. And even at that, when I was still a board member here and had a vote on this board, I did recuse myself from day one of anything to do with Jersey. So I made sure at that time that there was a clear separation. Obviously, that's diminished. Not on the board. I would simply be serving as a consultant, making recommendations to this board. I have no authority. I mean, just trying to help out here, so it wouldn't be a conflict that way either.
Following up on that, I guess, how would you respond to those who say you do have a conflict?
I've not had anyone tell me directly that I do. I've certainly heard that. And again, I go back to the main thing here is when it comes to Jersey and the district, that wheel was set in motion back in 2010 through an agreement with the county commissioners for the district to serve up in that area, obviously predating me significantly. It was amended in 2013. There was an MOU in 2020, I think, that really was the next step of that. And that was a discussion between the district, and I was involved in that, between the district and Jersey. But again, long predating any involvement with Jersey and the position that I'm in now. And then the 2022 agreement, as I stated to Ms. Carter's question, the...when I took my employment at Jersey, I was very clear with this board that I was recusing myself of anything to do with the water district in Jersey, and I did that the entire time. So from that perspective, there's been nothing historically. Now, moving forward, as I said, I'm not a board member here. You all make the decisions. You all make the votes. I would be serving just as any other consultant would be, making recommendations to the board, working with staff, things like that. So the reality is a conflict does not exist.
Have you had legal review of that?
So I know that the district's legal counsel has been in touch with the township's legal counsel, and that has been clear in essence, is similar to how it was when I was serving as a board member.
Thank you. Is that accurate, I guess, what I wanted to ask?
Yeah.
Andrew, whether we've had legal review? I haven't asked that.
You're fine. All right. So, I mean, the answer is yes, I did. You know, as sort of part of the due diligence, I looked at the ethics of all this. So, I mean, I concluded similarly to the past that when there was not an incompatibility, an irreconcilable conflict between the board member and an employee, based on some agey opinion or research, that we reached out to the Jersey Township, had that discussion again. I think the thought process was similar to what Mr. Platt referenced, was that now he would...if there was not a conflict before, being a non-employee, a non-board member, a consultant, that shouldn't change it the other direction. If anything, it tilts it more to the other direction. And I think, you know, from Jersey's side, they'll, you know, do whatever monitoring they think is appropriate on their side to ensure, you know, whatever compliance they think they need. But no, I mean, we had that discussion, and then I think last time, too, we sort of rolled the prosecutor into the discussion, and we probably ultimately did the same thing here, too. But again, I think it's been a positive discussion. There's been no concerns. I double-checked today. No one's changed their mind. We're still in the pipeline, and I got the answer, yeah.
I guess I would ask how you would handle privileged information that you may gain or have gained in your employment with Jersey Township when it has effects on agreements with the district? While you are not directly negotiating any agreements between Jersey and the district, you would be giving advice on potential agreements between us and other entities that you have confidential information about? How do you resolve that?
Yeah, I think really it's pretty simple when I go back to the 2022 agreement, July, August, maybe, entered into between the district and Jersey. All that's spelled in there, out in there. That's a compensation agreement that's already been inked and signed by everybody. So there really is no negotiation per se, at least for Jersey, between any kind of developer or landowner or anything like that with the district. It's already spelled out on how those mechanisms are going to work out and generate revenues and spend that money back to the district. So I guess to be honest, and upfront, my main focus with Jersey will be things like zoning and administration for the township trustees and things like that. And if there's a utility thing, it would probably be more towards roads, as water service kind of already laid out, I guess, if you will.
I guess I'll be more specific. If you had specific...you had knowledge of information that wasn't...that was given in an executive session that was then pertinent to something that the district would be dealing with, not just with Jersey, but any other entity?
What's a consultant's responsibility to its entities that it consults?
Sure, sure. I mean, there's obviously an obligation to adhere to a...secrecy is not the word, but I mean, keeping confidentiality is the word, right? And I guess I could run into that with Jersey. I would have to make those decisions and make sure that I either recuse myself from one or the other or not be involved. And I think any consultant, when you're working in an area and you've got multiple clients or you, in my case, another employer, you're going to have the potential for this situation. So I think you just have to be aware of that and respect the confidentiality of it.
Can you disclose those upfront to all your clients?
Absolutely, I would.
Sure.
I'll let you go, Chris.
You're good? Okay. I'm sorry, I'm just looking at my transcript a little bit. Can you tell me a little bit? I know while you were a board member here, you worked on some jet agreements. Can you give some detail about the model that you used for those jet agreements? And I guess maybe a little bit about how those agreements could be helpful or beneficial for the district going forward?
Sure. Yeah, but as I said, and I'll give a little more detail, but historically, Southwest Lake Water and Sewer has not been a recipient of development revenues per se. It's always tried to live off of user fees, tap fees, debt elimination, if you will. And so a couple of years ago, the district board really took a kind of a 90-degree turn, if you will, maybe 180, if you want to say it that way, to make sure that developers were paying their fair share. And part of that is when you have commercial and light industrial development, then the jets, like you said, can be created. So the...back in 2021, about the fall of 2021, the district was aware that Union Township was looking to have water extended out route 40 and out 37. They wanted to see that those corridors develop. The reality is that whoever serves that, that has to be paid for somehow. So I reached out to Union Township, and I said we should probably sit down and have a discussion on if the district was to get involved with this. Are there ways of revenue mechanisms that the townships willing to put into place that would cover those costs to the district? And through the course of the end of '21 and then pretty much all of '22, those discussions did take place. Ultimately, Union Township has either completed or is finalizing a jet which will enact a 2% income tax on all the commercial and light industrial development at Union in the route 40 and 37 corridors. And the district will be a 20% recipient of the net revenues of that jet. That is...historically has not been done at the district. Southwest Lake, a number of years ago, did ask at the township to carve off part of the jet dollars, but there really wasn't. And there really wasn't much response or support for that from the township, board of trustees. But the...there really wasn't kind of going without a project that was identified and a cost and things like that. So what we've done here in the last couple of years is successfully get that jet in place to again give the district 20% of the net revenues for the life of the jet. And that's a little bit different than paying the infrastructure costs and then jumping out of the jet. You'll have a long-term revenue source that you didn't have before. And the kind of the neat thing about it is that jet is in addition to TIF revenues. TIF absolutely should be used for public infrastructure. So there...it's kind of a two-part approach to it. Really, what should happen in the end is the TIF should pay for the public infrastructures, public infrastructure costs, and then the jet revenues that are flowing back to the water district then would become revenues for long-term maintenance and things like that. Again, additional revenues that you didn't have. So I was able to kind of lead that discussion and negotiation with that and make sure that we secure that 20% as well as the district does have a seat on that jet board. So no matter if it's the three-member board without businesses set up or a five-member board, the third or fifth, depending, seat will be determined by this board, by this district. So at least you get to say on those jets, and really that should be the model moving forward, in my opinion. And that is what I would recommend that you guys continue with. So it'll be a...it's a successful endeavor, and it'll be additional revenues for you you wouldn't have had in the past.
When you had those contacts and conversations with those people, did you share that with your fellow board members?
A lot of...I guess I would be careful there because there were a lot of requests for executive sessions from Union. So there were things shared in the executive sessions that probably would be as a tip without talking to somebody about sharing. But I know the board had asked me to kind of lead some of those. We all, as you guys recall, had a kind of a specialty, things that we were, I don't know, good at or just specialized in. And one of it was incentive agreements and negotiations for that. So I kind of held that, headed that up, and then when something was coming to a draft form or something like that, I would share it. So...
Absolutely.
I have a question that's a little less about necessarily qualification, because I don't think qualification is the question, for me anyways, when it comes to this situation. The contract that was presented to this board at our last meeting, was that a contract that you had any...did you get to see that before that was provided to us and have any been put into that contract?
I did have it put to it. And as you recall, it stated a three-year term, and that was something that I had asked for that in there simply because it matched what you guys had posted online. You were looking for a consultant for a three-year term. So, yeah, it was not a contract that I drafted from scratch, but any means I'm not on a term. But, yes, I did have it.
What was the purpose of 180-day termination?
I think, you know, when you get into, at least my perspective, again, this was a draft that these were my thoughts on it. I think that we are looking at long-term solutions, if you will, long-term actions by this board, things that don't take, you know, a 30-day, you get into a contract with somebody or something like that. These are...well, Union Township, as an example, started in fall of '21. So more of knowing that these things take a lot of time to develop and get these things in place. And I didn't want to put myself in a position where I was doing all this work and getting these things set up, and then, okay, thanks, and see you later, you know? So it was more of a...the request was more of a protection for me, to be honest, in my work product, knowing that, again, these things are long-term and not just quick turnaround.
So this isn't obviously anything I've discussed with my fellow board members because it's difficult to talk in a three-member board outside of a meeting.
It is. They're calling us a three-member board.
Yes, it is. I'm going accustomed to this. But my next question would be if this board were to say we need a different type of contract that was more on an as-needed basis, is that something that you would be amenable to instead of this three-year, 180-day termination sort of situation?
Yeah. I mean, as needed, I think you can capture that by a shorter term and notice period. So, and I'm not opposed to that. Again, I was trying to match what you guys posted and stuff. As needed, I see the amount of work going into this simply because I know, you know, the last couple of years, how much work goes into this and the phone calls at night, you know, there's a lot that goes into it. So what I proposed, what I thought is a reasonable hourly rate, but set at a monthly retainer on this amount, just a set amount, simply knowing that...and to be honest, I set it low. I recognize I ended up putting in more hours than what is actually stated there. But I would not be opposed to like a 90-day notice period, you know, cut that in half, I think, three months. Again, we're working with long-term contracts here and negotiations. So I would not be at all opposed to that. And if, you know, if you wanted to make the contract just a one-year contract and then just have it automatically renew, I would not at all be opposed to that as well. I think that's probably a lot easier, especially when you have a 90-day notice period. I think that's probably a lot easier. I don't know that I call that as needed because I think that you would keep a set monthly retainer. But again, you know, I'm happy to come to give the board a...I'd offered to come to a month, once-a-month meeting, give an update to the board. You're going to know, your staff's going to know what I've been involved with and things. And so I'm not really too worried about that. But term-wise, 90 days, one-year contract, I'd be happy with it.
I'll let someone else go.
Excellent. I asked you before a little bit about the jets. I know I'm not an expert. I'm not even...don't want to even claim to...have any idea how to begin to set up a jet or CRA or any of these other items that are available to be used by political subdivisions? But one of the questions I've heard a lot of, and I don't know that I understand it fully, is talking about putting the costs on the back of the current customers. It's been a talking point. How is a jet or a TIF not doing that? Help me understand, as essentially a novice in those tools, because of course it takes some time for those revenues to ramp up.
It does.
And so I think that's probably what's being referred to there, but maybe give me some input.
Yeah, it does take some time. TIPS are based on property taxes, right? So when you have to go from the year of assessment, once it's completed, gone vertical, assessed by the county auditor, then you're paying in arrears a year anyway. So there is a delay there. Getting jet revenues in, ramping up the workers that are on those parcels. So there are a short period of time, a number of years, before those really start kicking revenues in. And so the kind of, again, the Union Township model's a great model, that the district, it doesn't matter what the cost is, if it's a $5 million project or something like that, the district's going to go ahead and pull that debt and start that project. And obviously, none of the revenues start unless you perform a project, right, and you get development in there. But the key to that is that the district has to capture those costs from day one. So whatever those carry costs are in those first few years have to be cycled into then the reimbursable dollars through the jet and the TIF. So it may take a few years for those dollars to start coming, but in the end, the district is made whole. So it is a true statement that the district customers are not paying $1 of that because the agreements, again, with Union specifically, but that's kind of the model, is the district is laying out those costs, whether it's pulling a loan and making an interest only payment or something like that. All of those costs are being captured and paid back, you know, as those revenues start to come in. So, yeah, it does take a little bit. There is a little bit of an outlay of cash. But again, that development does not happen unless somebody elects to move forward. Now, the other side of that is if, again, if you go into a $5 million project or something like that, if you're trying to get extensions down to serve some parcels, traditionally the district would charge its tap and capacity fees and then monthly fees for those. But you would have...you would be covering that cost. This is historically, right? Again, laying out costs, debt elimination, all those things. This model moving forward captures all those costs and grabs them into a reimbursable expense through the jet and the TIF. The district is then made whole in the end. The customer does not pay a dollar. Does that help, is it?
I think so.
Okay.
That includes any debt that we acquired of the jet project?
Yeah, absolutely.
Every dime that goes into that project is reimbursable by the...
You're a district accountant, Ms. Cady, and we need to track all that per project. Yeah, absolutely. The union agreement, as I recall, does have...does identify those reimbursable costs.
Does that include something like a water line that we ran up 310?
It does. You know, it's an interesting thought because the district elected to move forward with that, I think, in 2020, maybe? Something like that. And that was early on in 2020. I recall a discussion with Ed Bray that that is, in essence, taking a water line. It was kind of a two-part project, probably more...I know CJ knows more about it than I do, but the main point for me was that project, that water line project, provided an interconnect with the city of Pataslo there on 310. Should either entity have some sort of breakdown or need or something like that? It's an assurance policy for both. But it was also taking the water line up north into Jersey and St. Holman's. But it was also taking the water line up north in New Jersey and St. Holman Township, to both of them. They're both recipient of services through there where their parcels are. And ultimately, it terminated at Coglin Ford. So those costs are captured in the reimbursement agreement with Jersey Township to pay those back. So you have all moved forward with the water line on Worthington Road. Those are captured as well through the TIP agreement. But it did go back and take care of those as well. Again, because that was really, in essence, what the 2020 MOU was getting to. Hey, the district had an interest in extending those services, but only if there was a way to pay for it. And so that was included in there as well. Those costs are reimbursable for that 310 water line project.
Did that, did that particular project start before you were member of the board?
It did.
I believe design did, yes.
Yeah.
I would say the construction part, Mr. Platt.
So the concept of going north?
I believe so, yes.
Certainly predated Rob on the board, predated myself on the board, predated Mrs. Carter on the board. Mr. Kratzman.
I was obviously not part of the conversation, but I've been told that the district board prior to me had been talking with Al Coglin about trying to get water up there to his site. So that certainly predated me.
Okay, absolutely. Thanks.
Traditionally, and I'm, you know, I'm still learning the ropes around here. But so our manager would be the person who is the, takes the head on things like this, like is usually the lead on things that, of this nature, when it comes to the negotiations, the, you know, attending meetings, whatever else it may be. So how do you see your role as the consultant in conjunction with the manager?
Sure.
Where's one start, where is one?
Yeah, I certainly, as a consultant, am not the general manager and do not speak for the board. Certainly, as I said earlier, in a consultant role, I can make recommendations. I put in my proposal to the district that I would attend meetings and things in conjunction with the general manager, the legal counsel, and/or the legal counsel, however you all saw fit for me to report to or work with. So I'm happy to be an asset there, but certainly, I am not an employee of the board and I certainly am not a member of the board, right? So I would be, again, the word I would use is an asset to the general manager and your chief legal counsel. It seems to be the structure that's been, then, historically, recent at least.
And that was going to be my comment, that you would work for the general manager and we would be privy to all the information too, so.
Yeah. Historically, the general manager has been the, I don't know how you want to say it, maybe buck-stopped here type. I mean, they lead the district, right, and take things to the board. Certainly, I would be subordinate to that person.
Your advice to the general manager, who would make a recommendation to us, would certainly be encompassed in that recommendation, so. And if any disagreements came up, I'm sure we hear both sides of it.
CJ, is that an accurate assessment of how you typically work with our consultants? Whether they be, sorry, I'm having to pass them off.
I'm sorry. Yeah, typically, consultants would work directly with the general manager and other staff. I mean, that's a typical setup. And of course, consult the board when asked and needed.
I don't have others.
I don't have any other questions necessarily, just more comments for us, but not direct questions for Mr. Platt.
I would just ask, CJ, in the past, you've had to work with Mr. Platt as a board member. Has there been any time when I've been to work with you?
No.
That's not incomparable.
So, no, I think Mr. Platt and I have worked well in the past, just like I have with the rest of the board. So I have no issues working with Mr. Platt.
As a judge on the board, you probably would. When we, Mr. Platt stepped up when he was a board member for, right now, we're in a transition. We hired a new attorney to replace the judge who's been moving on. And that's going to make us a little more susceptible, because our new hire has not had the experience that our current counsel has. So all those factor into someone who's been down this road and knows where the minefield is and knows what's going on in our district. So in my humble opinion, with no other candidates for this position, I think this takes a strong statement as to what we're going to do in the near and distant future.
Did we, did we not receive any additional candidates?
Uh, no, this was the only qualification.
No, I have a week ago.
Yeah, this is the only.
Another week has passed.
It's the only qualifications.
Of the oldest in U.S. postal.
Not that I'm aware of.
Comments? We can enter trustee comments now, if you'd like. Okay, with you.
If I'm not mistaken, the order of the agenda was to allow public comments before trustee comments.
You're correct, and I asked for that.
I mean, I was not here for that. Is there a reason why the agenda was changed? This is a special meeting.
I requested an opportunity for public comments.
I guess my thought to the board would be if the board would reconsider that, given the way that the meeting was noticed. That would be my suggestion to the board, to reconsider that. For whatever reason, it's not on there, and it's a special meeting, so. Or can take that under advisement. I just want to offer that up since I was not here when that would have been done.
My question is, and it has been my experience, not here, but other places, that as long as the public comments pertain to the meeting in hand, it was okay?
Again, like, without the opportunity to sort of engage on this, I would just say, hey, given what is printed, what was noticed, and again, I understand there may be a desire to have public comment. And I, but again, sort of, given the 24-hour notice, that's my suggestion, is that you take that under advisement as.
This is clearly an OMA violation if we do it?
Why are you doing this to me, Larry?
We're leaving the house, and you're moving on.
I don't think you should do it. If you're asking for a straight recommendation, then no, I don't think you should do it, especially given the current situation. So, but again, like, I'm not going to tell you. I can make an argument if you want me to make it the other way. But if you're asking for my recommendation, that is my recommendation.
Well, I guess that makes it the voice prerogative.
I have an opinion.
To amend it? There was a motion to amend it.
I understand. And like I said, I realize.
We did make a motion to amend the agenda.
Okay, and again, I just, I was not here, you know.
And I still have comments to give, but what I would say with that particular issue is if we have to notice it properly in order to receive public comments, and I think there's enough interest in making public comments, that we wouldn't make a decision today and allow public comments at our next meeting, which is a big way. That is my opinion.
And that would be a regular.
A regular meeting where public comments.
Which would allow much more flexibility from a published agenda perspective, correct?
Correct. And I mean, I sat here and kind of relooked at the yellow book over talking. So I mean, if I needed to, I can make an argument that, yes, the motion is fine. But I, sort of, but my job is a sort of advisory, and I'm in abundance of caution. So if I'm acting out of an abundance of caution, that would be my recommendation. But again, if I need to defend it, I feel like I could defend it.
Well, we have no reason to, to violate an OMA directive or law, rule as it is. So what's the pleasure of the board? And can a motion to proceed, or stop, or suspend, or whatever is the, whatever we can vote on to move forward? Because if I don't hear one, we're going to proceed with our comments and vote. Or not vote. That's our only choices.
So we did modify the agenda.
So do we, if we decided not to accept public comments, do we have to then make a motion to not take public comments, since we did modify the agenda?
I would say for housekeeping purposes, yes. I would do that. And I apologize again, like, I was a few minutes late, so that, I apologize for that, and that's on to you.
I guess we could just withdraw the second and the motion to add the public comments to it. Take it off that way.
It's already been voted on. Believe.
Just after we say it.
Believe that you.
If we choose to.
So I have to make a motion to rescind my original motion?
Yeah, I think somebody should, if that's what they're actually, yes.
I think we would make a motion to remove public comments from this point in the agenda and move forward with the remainder of the agenda.
Yes, you can do that.
I have one more question. Is there a motion? Yes, I will move to remove public comments at this point in the agenda out of an abundance of caution on the advice of our chief legal counsel.
I'm second to the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Only back to my original, is that I would prefer that before, we still have our trustee comments, but before any decisions are made, we allow for public comments at our next regular meeting next week.
I don't see any good reason why a board would not want to hear the comments of anyone who would wish to provide comments.
Please go roll.
Mr. Step?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kratzman?
Upstanding. Motion carries. We have rescinded the public comment in order to make sure we're in compliance with OMA and our attorney's encouragement. So we're now down to board action and trustee comments. Trustee comments.
I get to go first?
Yes, please.
Okay. I tend to speak rather bluntly, so I'm sorry if you guys are going to have to get to me this way. But I'll be honest when I say I feel like this situation with this particular contract and how this came about was sprung in me. And I have an uneasy feeling about how this has moved forward. I don't necessarily care for the fact that while it was posted and put out there, we weren't just brought the responses such as received from Mr. Platt and that it was presented the night before a meeting with the contract that apparently Mr. Platt had had an opportunity to have input into. This doesn't appear to be a transitional contract. And that was when I voted for the opportunity to have an economic development consultant. That's what my impression was, that this was a transitional situation, because we did just lose the experience of Mr. Platt on the board. And we're losing, you know, Mr. King. And so there's a lot of moving parts. And I'm not sure how I feel about public comments not being included on this agenda. While true or not, this board has the, there is the perception, and you know, perception is people's reality, that this board is not transparent or doesn't allow for input or feedback. And I don't want to perpetuate that. This is the whole scenario. I had an attorney once who was fantastic, and he drove me crazy all the same time, because I would want to do things and he was showing me them. And, but he would say, Mel, it doesn't pass the smell test. Because every time I would go, he'd say, see, it doesn't pass the smell test. You wrinkled your nose. And he drove me bonkers. But every time I play this over in my head, you know, I think the board's recent history, issues with litigation, contracts. It's a very small political world that we live in here. All of us have served, almost all of us have served in other positions, in other places. Everybody knows each other. It's, to me, Mr. Platt certainly does not lack the qualifications. His position in Jersey Township, for me, while does not have a vote, he would provide advice to the manager, who would then give us recommendations. And that would influence our votes. To me, that does not pass a smell test. I believe that we could get assistance from a company. We don't have to post for it. We could solicit it. We could go out and ask. We don't have to wait for them to come to us. And use it on an as-needed basis. You have a firm that has, any number of firms that have a number of people that work in them that work outside of our areas, so there is no conflict. There is no internal questions that help us move forward in a healthy way. I just want to make sure that we continue on a solid path and not rocky. This feels rocky. That's what I have to say.
Mr. Step? I don't think I disagree with anything Mrs. Carter said. I do have a couple of different perspectives when it comes to the other folks. I mean, we could talk about folks like Nate Green, who I believe works for the city of Pitasqua. And so to have his firm represent us here in a township in the same capacity would present the same conflict. We could talk about guys like Jim Leonard, same conflict. So getting somebody who's familiar with the area, familiar with the people, familiar with the projects, and have them not have any involvement in any of our local subdivisions is relatively difficult, unless you know other companies out there. I know I have had a number of conversations with folks who essentially don't have any interest in an as-needed, 10-hour-a-week type of contract just basically because they're already swamped with all of the other work that they have out there. So that's the one piece. I don't think we can sit on this for another 60 days. Frankly, I think we need to move forward with something soon, because we have activities and projects in flight right now with entities who have approached me directly and said, is the ball going to get dropped? And if not, who is going to pick up the ball and run with it? And having those types of conversations with partners that we've been working with and talking to for months is troublesome to me. working with and talking to for months is troublesome to me because I don't have the answers. I'd love to have the answers. I'd love to be able to pick up the ball and run with it in some of these situations, but I frankly don't have the experience, I frankly don't have the expertise. And that's, we, we're 20 days or less, 15 days or less, 14 days before we don't have that experience at house at all. So that's, that's the part to me that is, is troubling, whether it's Mr. Platt or somebody else, is, is it's got to happen soon. It's got to be somebody that can engage quickly and that can move quickly, or else there will be balls that, that drop. And, and I don't want that for the district because some of the things that we're working on, I believe, are going to be exceptionally important to the, to the future of this district. I think we'll, we'll talk about a number of those on Monday, when we, when we host our meeting on, on Monday. So a lot of what we talk about on Monday is going to be very difficult to accomplish without the right team in place to do that. Leave, that's all of my comments. Thank you.
My first comment is that if we did everything according to the smell test, I'm not sure we couldn't just shut the place down. At some point, you have to stand up and say what you're about, say what you're going to do. I apologized for many of my mistakes, and I don't think in good conscience I can let this district waller while we search for people that don't know what we already know in this room. I believe our general manager has served admirably for three years with very little help. I believe he would be confident enough in Mr. Platt to take his advice and bring it to us, and we would be able to determine from the recommendations from both of them, what is in the best interest of the water and sewer district. So having said that, I'm ready to proceed with whatever action we want to take. And if anybody has any more comments, I'm ready to welcome them.
I don't have any additional comments.
I'll save mine.
Are we ready to take possible action on the development consultant? We'll find out. I would like to resolve, what resolution would this be?
12.
To approve the contract with RPM Development LLC as presented. And I'll give you a minute to center my motion and we will die.
Larry, I'll second your motion.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion?
I have a discussion. I understand we have a number of irons in the fire and things going on, but I'm not sure how it's incumbent upon us to provide the funding mechanism or advice for funding mechanisms for infrastructure for other communities. I mean, they could, they come to us, we, they tell us what they need, we tell them how much it costs, and they figure out how to do that funding mechanism. So if anything, they should be worried about having somebody to advise them on whoever they may be, TIPS and, and other things. I don't believe that waiting one week to allow for public comments and additional consideration is going to sink the ship. What's that?
No, I, I, I would agree, the reason I, I second your motion was to make the comment that I, I don't know that, I, I have worked very well with Mr. Platt for the last two years, and, and being able to continue to lean on his expertise in some of the things that we need to do is an appealing thing to me because I know the district needs it. But I don't want to put that in front of necessarily the opportunity to hear from the public, regardless of the decision or influence that that may have to our decision. I think they need to have the opportunity, the public needs to have the opportunity to, to speak on that behalf, and I've told that to a number of other folks today as well. So I wanted to get to this point and have this discussion. I'm certainly not opposed to continuing forward with, with Mr. Platt and a potential amended contract based on some of the comments that you've had and some of the comments that I've input into, I believe, hopefully, what's in front of us today. I haven't reviewed this, this document today, but I have had some input into this contract with the, the hopes of making it a more powerful solution for, for the district. So regardless of how I may vote on this particular item, I'm, I'm not necessarily opposed to continuing to have this conversation.
Well, I would say that my expertise on funding through TIPS and JETS is maybe a couple of days ahead of yours, and that's why we have consultants. I believe that we have the ultimate right to vote on any agreement that we make, and if our consultants tell us that it's not a good jet or not a good tip, I think we would vote accordingly. But right now, I'm not prepared to say that I know all about JETS and TIPS. So certainly, we can delay this as long as the board would like. I understand we can listen to all the public comments. We might have 50 people in here next week if we want to prolong the discussion. If that's going to change everybody's mind, so be it. Call the questions?
Mr. Step?
No.
Mrs. Carter?
No.
Mr. Kratzman?
Yes. Motion is, is failed to hire a consultant, and I would like to hear a motion to adjourn.
So who?
Second.
Can, but just, this hasn't happened right.
Is there any discussion?
So do, do you, and again, this is sort of board procedure custom, because this, it will be like an old business item, do you want to postpone, bring it up? Do you want to make an affirmative statement to bring it up at the next meeting? Because I, I just don't know what the board custom is, because we don't typically have an agenda item for old business, so. I, I just, again, with a, with a vote, I just not sure where the board, with a vote, with a discussion that says we're going to take future action, I just want to make sure that the next agenda appropriately reflects what the board desires. Is that a fair question?
Well, I think we're all have access to board agenda, we can put anything on there we want, can't we?
Okay, I, again, I just.
So something will be on there if we choose to put it on there.
Agreed. Okay. Sorry.
A motion to adjourn, please call the.
Mr. Step?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kratzman?
Yes.